County Mayor of uptown council meeting is called to order 6:33 PM, August 27th. Please stand for the invocation by Reverend Bill Hudson from the First Presbyterian Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Reverend Hudson present? No? Okay. Dear Father, we bow our heads and ask for your presence in our town of Maryville. Please keep everyone safe as they travel through our town. Please keep our employees, all our employees, under your graceful hands. We ask this in the name of the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Spann, here. Hardaway?
Here.
Garalcheck?
Here.
Baron? Edet?
Here.
Whitey?
Here.
Here. Let it show six council persons are present at this time. Petitions, communications, and remonstrations. We have a proclamation for national brain aneurysm awareness. County Mayor of Maryville, State of Indiana, natural, national brain aneurysm awareness. Whereas, a brain aneurysm is an abnormal sacular or fusiform bulging of an artery within the brain. It is estimated that one out of 50 people within the United States will develop a brain aneurysm, and whereas, a brain aneurysm is most likely to occur in people between the ages of 35 and 60. They are more likely to occur in women than in men by a three-to-two ratio, and whereas, various risk factors can contribute to the formation of a brain aneurysm: infection, tumors, traumatic head injury, drug use, smoking, hypertension, and a family history of brain aneurysms. Six million people within the United States will develop a brain aneurysm which will not rupture, and a ruptured brain aneurysm can lead to fatigue, short-term memory problems, speech problems, loss of balance and coordination, and changes in behavior. Whereas, a brain aneurysm is often discovered when it ruptures and causes a subacroid hemorrhage. A subacronoid hemorrhage can lead to brain damage, hydrocephalase, stroke, and death. Annually, over 30,000 people in the United States suffer ruptured brain aneurysms. Yearly, 3,000 to 4,500 people with ruptured brain aneurysms die before reaching the hospital, and whereas, a number of advancements have been made in recent years regarding the detection of aneurysms, among them, the computerized tomography, CAT scan, the magnetic resonance imaging MRI tests, and the cerebral anterior gram. Various research studies are currently being conducted around the United States in order to better, to understand the nature of brain aneurysms and how to prevent and treat them.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. On the consent agenda, council payable register voucher approval, August 27, 2013, also the approval of town council meeting minutes of August 13, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Whiting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to standing committees, Budget and Finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Pettit.
Yes, Madam President, we have a deed of dedication for public right-of-way that Mr. Buscemi has prepared in relation to the Mississippi Street widening project. This is on the west side of Mississippi, south of 83rd Avenue, just south of what used to be, I guess it's 8300 Mississippi, the office building that kind of sits at an angle. This is on the west side, and this cleans up some documentation that John and Robinson Engineering have come across in the right-of-way acquisition process for the Mississippi Street widening. So there is a deed of dedication for public right-of-way, and there's also a dedication for temporary construction easement. John, I believe everyone has these, correct?
Yes, they do, and the council needs to take a specific vote to approve both, to approve the execution of both documents.
Do they need to be individually, can they be together?
Be done together.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the deed of dedication for public right-of-way and the deed for the temporary construction easement for the Mississippi Street project.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Whiting, to approve the public, what was that again, I'm sorry?
Deed of dedication for public right-of-way and also dedication of temporary construction easement.
Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero.
That is all I have at this time, Madam President.
Very good. Council Affairs, Councilman Spann.
Well, I'm gonna table what I got till the next meeting.
Okay. Very good.
One thing, Madam President, I've been getting phone calls about the shared ethics committee, and people looking for answers why we haven't joined yet, and then, we've talked about it once, I'm just gonna break it up again. I think that it's something that we need here in the town, and I'd like for whoever needs to look into it to look into it again, so that we can give the citizens here in town an answer as to why we don't want to be part of it.
We could, we could look into that at our next workshop, but we have to also consider what is the cost factor. You know, we have to protect our taxpayers' money, and if any resident of this town feels that any one of us is being unethical in our job, in our performance as an elected official, please come forward.
I've received a couple of phone calls, too, and they asked me, "How come we didn't belong to it?" And I said, "If it's free, we'd join tomorrow." But I don't feel taxpayers should pay for us to get ethical.
It's not for us, it's for the employees, it's more so for the employees than it is for us. I just think that it's something that we should look at. I don't think that we're doing the community a service if we just continue to refuse to do it.
Refuse to be ethical, or refuse to have ethical employees?
If we refuse to join it. We find money to do every other thing that we want to do, and I think that this is something that we should look at, and we should figure out how we can do this, how we can finance it.
You know, it's fine, but we're gonna send employees, instead of patching the street, we're gonna send them to school one day to be ethical about patching streets? You know, I think, I think it's a fee that, as of right now, we're struggling as a town, we're finally getting out of debt, and we're gonna join some other agency because it was article in the paper one time.
It's not, that, there's, we're not gonna debate that here, Jean. I just think that...
I understand. We'll save that for the council workshop, Councilman Harvick.
Thank you, Madam President.
We will save that for the next workshop.
Thank you.
Okay. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilman Garalcheck.
Yes, Forest Financial has met with us earlier last month, and they're gonna be meeting with us soon to go over the healthcare reform that's coming for next year. Some of the deadlines have been pushed back, but our insurance renewal is coming due on January 1st, so I'm gonna be setting up some meetings with Forest Financial to come in and start talking about the insurance renewal.
Very good. Anything else on the Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits? Public Safety, Councilman Whiting.
Madam President, I have no report.
Okay.
Joe, do you have anything?
No.
I do. I do. I'd like to read a letter to Patrol Commander Kajurna in Horvath from Sergeant Burzak. It's a reference of a commendation dated August 22nd of this year. "I would like to make you aware of case number 2013-1776, in which Officer L. Shaw, #347, and Officer S. Coleman, #361, arrested three suspects involved in a scheme to steal a wallet out of a victim's purse at Aldi's located at 10 West 81st Avenue. The three suspects then made fraudulent purchases in the area with the victim's credit cards. Officer Shaw conducted a criminal investigation and followed leads from Aldi's to Target into Home Depot to obtain essential suspect information and vehicle description. Officer Coleman was in the area when he observed a red and gray Pontiac minivan which matched the description provided by Officer Shaw. The suspect vehicle headed westbound on US 30 approaching I-65. Officer Coleman followed the vehicle, notified dispatch, and conducted a traffic stop at 61st and I-65. The three occupants of the vehicle matched the description of the suspects in the surveillance video, and the three were arrested for felony theft and credit card fraud. Officer Shaw's quick action made it possible for Coleman to be on the lookout for the vehicle and make the stop which led to the arrests. There have been numerous wallet thefts in the same area, and it has been a multi-jurisdictional problem with several victims. Shaw's good police work along with Coleman's excellent observations led to felony charges on three individuals which will lead to several cases being closed throughout the region. Officer Shaw and Officer Coleman should be recognized for their efforts, and I am recommending that they be awarded a Level 2 commendation. Respectfully, Sergeant Nick Burzak, with comments by Chief Joseph Patruche, outstanding arrest, job well done." We have, we have to be thankful for what a great police department we have. We get these reports from the Police Department, okay, every month. This has, happens to be, the last one I got was July. The August one isn't out, but it will be out later on this month. Calls for service, 1,946 calls for service. And this is done with 48 officers. The mileage throughout this town, 51,647 miles they drove. Traffic citations, 751 traffic citations. Of those citations, operating while intoxicated, 16; handicapped parking, 13; traffic warnings, 28. On the offense reports, we are so fortunate, no homicides and no rapes. I think we really have to be thankful with what we have with our officers. And please, Chief, extend to them, our or mine, however you want to do it, deepest appreciation for all they do for the town and the people.
Thank you. Now, officers had an outstanding arrest. That group has been plaguing the region for about two years. They're updated on, if you had a credit card with a photo ID on it, they had photos to replace those photos, okay, that's how it was going. They wasn't just, you know, stealing a wallet out of the purse and thinking, "We're gonna go somewhere real quick." That day, they, I believe they charged over $10,000 worth of items, a few.
Unbelievable.
Good job.
Was the victim from Maryville, or was she outside of town?
I can't remember right now.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering.
Okay, it was a young lady. Okay, she was in Aldi shop.
Okay. Okay, anything else on the Public Safety? Parks and Recreation, Councilman Spann.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the preserves park is almost finished. We finished the selling and surfacing on Friday, and so now we're just gonna finish up with the landscaping, and that'll be the last part for the year to be completed.
Yeah, looks nice. Did a nice job.
There's a, there's a letter in your pack that we just got today from our attorney dealing with the sale of park properties, and John, if you want to explain that real quick for everyone?
Sure. Madam President, members of the council, Karen, do you have a copy of the memo also? All right. The town council has been considering sale of certain surplus park properties and some other parcels for some time. We've engaged two appraisers, we have appraisals from Vail and Rayner on these various parcels, and there are actually 34 separate parcels, but they're grouped in eight areas: Williamsburg, Hendricks Park, Barkley Village Park, there are 26 planted subdivision lots that are at another location altogether, also Jennings and Wilson Park, the Jennings and Wilson Baseball Diamond, Devonshire Park, and Stephick Park. These are the locations that were appraised based on the understanding that these were locations that the town council was interested in selling and disposing. The real estate parcels are assets of the town, they're assets owned by the taxpayers, so we have a duty when we sell them to try to get fair market value for the taxpayers. And there are specific provisions in the Indiana Code that allow the town council to sell these surplus park properties, and to sell them either by a sealed bid process, which is the traditional process, or by using the services of a professional auctioneer. And I spoke with licensed auctioneer Rick Niemeyer, he has experience in selling by auction municipal park properties, and he believes that the auction process as opposed to just straight sealed bids is more advantageous for the town. So I'm recommending, if the council concurs, that we engage the services of Rick Niemeyer Auction Service and use professional auctioneering services to conduct the sale of these parcels. There are some advantages to using an auctioneer as opposed to just a legal notice in the paper and straight sealed bids delivered to the clerk treasurer's office. Those advantages include generating increased interest in the sale by advance advertising that Niemeyer would conduct for us. He would assist us with print advertising and also internet advertising. And I'm certain that our friends from the media would also assist with the advertising of the specific date and time if it's set by the council. We can reach more potential buyers by advertising ahead of time for an auction. We expose the properties to a larger number of pre-qualified bidders, and pre-qualified bidders would be a requirement of this process. Niemeyer would assist us in identifying the appropriate pre-qualified requirements. A pre-qualified bidder would come to the auction, pre-approved, and also bring earnest money payable to the town that is suitable for any of the parcels that a buyer would bid on. Another advantage is, an auction tends to bring people to the sale that are prepared to buy because they've already reviewed the parcels, and they're here for the specific reason of being interested in buying. And another benefit of auctioning is it creates competition on the day of auction by inflating the price. Now, hiring an auctioneer to auction these park properties and these other parcels doesn't guarantee we're gonna get a sale, and it doesn't guarantee that we're gonna get any particular price. The particular, the particular suitability of the property ultimately is what's gonna dictate whether we'll get a sale and how much the parcel will sell for. The cost of using the auctioneer is 5% of the gross sale proceeds. So if our gross sale proceeds from everything sold that day are $100,000, the fee paid to the auctioneer would be $5,000. If we sell no parcels that day, we owe the auctioneer nothing, because it's a 5% contingency on the gross sale proceeds. We would be responsible to pay the auctioneer for the cost of advertising. The advertising costs, depending upon how extensive a marketing we want him to do for us in advance of the sale date, can range between $500 and $1,000. I'll answer any questions if council members have them about this process. It's my recommendation that we use the actual auction process to sell the vacant properties, and that the council tonight, if it wishes to go forward with this, set a public hearing for our next meeting, which is Tuesday, September 10. That would be a public hearing where we would simply take input from the public on whether we're gonna go forward with the process of selling the properties. We'd be obligated to take comment for and against that. And then, after that public hearing is conducted at the next meeting on Tuesday, September 10, if the council approves going forward, we would then specifically set a date, location, and time for Niemeyer to conduct the auction. There would be a legal notice published in the paper, we would do advance marketing, we would make the appraisals available to anyone interested in bidding, and also, I would anticipate, Dorinda, that people who look at the properties might be making prior to the point of, the date of the sale, they might be making some inquiries with you about whether or not parcels would be suitable for development, building, things like that. We would all, we will be selling these parcels as-is, with no written guarantees of any particular use. So the bidders will be obligated to perform their own due diligence, and they will be buying the property with the understanding that it's as-is. Any conversation they would have with Dorinda prior to that would not be binding on the town, obviously. If someone needs rezoning, they'd be obligated to go through the proper steps and merit the rezoning. But we do believe some of these properties are potentially suitable for residential development, perhaps for commercial development, that would be decided by separate consideration. Tom?
Question on Hendricks Park, I mean, we do still have park equipment there. Would that park equipment need to come down before we sell the parcel, or do we...
Are all of our, all the parcels, the one or two parcels at Hendricks Park, Karen, is that everything at Hendricks Park? Are we intending to dispose of the entire park property there?
That was the original intention, I believe, yes.
All right. Well, then, Tom, the answer would be one of two things. Either the buyer would buy it as-is with the equipment there and be responsible for removal, or at that site and other sites, if the council wishes to incur the expense, and if you believe it makes the property more marketable by removing the park equipment prior to the point of sale, you could consider doing that.
But apparently, right now... I mean, they're gonna buy it as-is.
Apparently, right now, it's as-is.
They're buying it as-is with the equipment on it, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
I mean, I don't want to...
Unless you take other steps.
I don't know that we want to incur any more expense of taking the equipment out of there. I mean, the Montessori School might even buy that property for themselves.
Are there other parcels besides Hendricks?
There's one other parcel that I want to talk about.
Where there's existing equipment, Karen?
No. The other parks, the equipment was removed, removed last year. That's the only one that still has the equipment.
And then, on the Baseball Diamond, I mean, should we take the fencing down from the Baseball Diamond, or do we...
I think that's the same issue, either. We offer it as-is, knowing that, that may, that the buyer may incur an additional cost and be willing to bid less, or we incur the expense of removing the, it's a backstop, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
And then, this 26-plotted subdivision lots, that's in my area there, I had talked to Stormwater, and Darren Olson from Christopher Burke had talked about some, maybe even putting some kind of retention in there, so I don't know that we, we might want to withdraw that property beforehand. So, I mean, I'm gonna have some conversations with Christopher Burke about, you know, how quick they're wanting to put their master plan together here. It would be senseless for us to sell the property and then try to buy it back.
I agree, and I'm glad you mentioned that. What Councilman Garalcheck mentioned is a, is an example of when we would get to the details of the specific parcels that we would authorize to go on the final sale list. Tonight, we're just talking about, are we gonna go forward with this process? We don't need to decide tonight, Councilman, whether we're gonna sell all 26 of those budding lots, or maybe 14 of them, and reserve 12 for retention. The council members will have the final say on the precise package that we list with the auctioneer for the auction.
But you just want to vote on the process?
Yes.
I am.
The, if, if the council members are in agreement, the, Councilman, if the council members are in agreement, it would be to go forward with the sale of the properties via the auctioneering process, and to set a general public hearing for next meeting, Tuesday, September 10. After that public hearing, we would then finalize the list, arrange an agreeable date with the auctioneer. It'll probably be a date that's out into the fall so that he has suitable time to advertise and market for us. Councilman?
After we get the appraisals, when they go to auction, is there a limit that they have to meet? You know, some of these are buildable for houses, and, you know, what if only one person bids for a dollar?
The state law requires that the town sell for no less than 90% of the average of the two appraised values. I'll have, prior to next Tuesday night, I'll have the specific parcels and the two appraisals and the average of the two, that'll be our target prices, no less than 90%. Call the reserve bid. Of the average of the two. However, if we don't get a high bid that's equivalent to 90% of the two, then the council members will have a decision to make. You can accept a 70% bid, an 80% bid, a 60% bid, a 50% bid, but we would have to publish one more legal notice in the paper that's required to give the taxpayers notice that you're accepting less than that minimum of 90%. So it can be done, but you'll have a final say on whether you're gonna go forward with it, or whether you want to retain the parcel, because you feel that you're not getting enough for it. An example might be if someone, I don't think it'll happen, Councilman, but if someone bid a bid of just a dollar, we're not gonna dispose of the parcel for a dollar. We'll retain it.
But again, we don't have to maintain our property anymore, and plus, it goes back on a tax roll.
Yes, that's the advantage of selling, even in the event that you have...
Exactly right.
...a bid less than 90.
Right.
I'd like to make a most tried process.
All right. Second.
Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck, to approve the plans for the selling of the parks.
And Madam President, what I'd like to request is that the process that the council is voting on, that'll go into the minutes as the bottom line of the memo where it says "recommendation."
Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Anything else on the Parks and Recreation? Environmental Affairs, Councilman Garalcheck?
The only thing I have is the Taft Street project is in a construction delay. AT&amp;T's duct is in the, in conflict or whatever. They looked over the plans, obviously, they missed it on the plans that, that their duct was in, in conflict there, so we're working with AT&amp;T to get this issue resolved, and hopefully, we can move forward here before the winter. That's all in my report.
Okay. Anyone else on the Environmental Affairs? Elections and Public Relations? We're moving forward on our historic district. This Friday, we will be having a meeting, trying to figure out what needs to be done, how it's going to be done, and the best way it's going to serve our town. Dorinda will be present, Councilman Pettit, myself, and Clerk Treasurer Jean Guernsey will also be present at this meeting at Friday, 12 o'clock. September 15th is the deadline for receiving letters to be on the committee and also on the subcommittee, so make sure the letter gets sent to the Town Hall to my attention so we could start forming that. We had our groundbreaking ceremony, and it was a total success. We had so many people. We had people with state, elected officials, county, and town. We had roughly 34 unions represented, and when they came to luncheon, we had approximately 85, so it was 85 people present. So it was a very well-turned-out event, and everyone has to say one thing, that property at 7,200 Broadway sure looks a lot better without those upside-down canoes, the shed, the junk, the trash that I know I've seen, like all of us have seen for years and years. So, with that being said, Economic Development, Councilman Garalcheck?
No report.
Utility Liaisons, Councilman Pettit?
No report.
Under Town Government Reorganization and ADA Compliance, I have no report. Moving to ordinance, first readings, ordinance 13-30, in ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, requiring project labor agreements for all town of Maryville, TIP District, and property tax abatement, construction projects.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordnance 13-37, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, depleting monies of the 2013 budget within various departmental budgets.
Motion accept, ma'am.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Span seconded by Councilman Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalchek?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Second readings, ordinance 13-29, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the police continuing education fund of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2013, not included in the current budget.
No move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no discussion or public comment, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalchek?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordnance 13-32, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the town hall budget.
Motion approved, Madam President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Span seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalchek?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordnance 13-33, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating a budget line item within the town of Maryville within the rental registration budget.
No move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit seconded by Councilman Garalchek. Any discussion? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comments? Seeing no public comment or discussion, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalchek?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordnance 13-34, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating a budget line item within the town of Maryville within the cumulative capital improvement budget.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit seconded by Councilman Span. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, public comment? Public comment? Public comment? Seeing no public comment or discussion, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes.
Garalchek?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 13-22, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the motor vehicle highway fund budget.
Motion approved, Madam President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Span seconded by Councilman Pettit. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to BZA action. Petitioner 61st Avenue Storage, is a petitioner here? Petitioner present?
Um, excuse me. When I contacted her earlier, I'm sorry, later last week, she had some health issues with her heart. I attempted to place another phone call yesterday and today, and there was no response. So I don't know if something happened there. Okay. Or, you know what. We actually do have till October 22nd to hear this petition.
Motion to table.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway seconded by Councilman Garalchek to table for September 10th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Petitioner Judith Stevens, is Judith here?
Hi. The owner is Francis Wardell. Request of a special exemption approval for a pet boarding kennel known as Sitting Pretty. Location 8900 Mississippi Street, zoning M-1, limited industrial, case number Z29E8-0713. For this petitioner only, at this location, only for this use only.
I have a question. This is open already?
Yes, not the board. We're a training facility. Training facility.
But you guys just do haircuts over there now and whatever, and training? Okay, I didn't.
We do organize.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Do you have a vet tech or a vet on duty?
Not on duty, no. No, if we had an emergency, we sort of, same procedure we do with dogs injured, we take them to the emergency facility.
And when someone comes into board or for training, do they bring their shot record, their veterinarian records?
Yes, they do, yes.
Okay, and if a bordatella is not given, that's known as kennel cough, that
That's when the vet requires.
The vet, you would give it there, correct?
No, they have, they wouldn't be allowed to bring their dog.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Any other questions?
Are you renting or do you own the building?
We rent.
You rent.
A motion for approval.
Motion by Councilman Whiting seconded by Councilman Pettit to, to grant this request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, welcome, and good luck on your business.
When do you anticipate commencing the kennel operation?
Well, we've already discussed it with our construction people, so we're going to start building the kennels, they're six by, six by eights that we're going to be building, and some eight by eights for the big dogs.
You have an estimated date that you're looking to commence? That operation?
As far as the building is going to be finished with the kennels themselves?
Yeah.
Hopefully, by the end of September.
For boarding services, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Petitioners, Cenzerhart Adult Daycare, the petitioner is present? Okay, the owner is the Platinum Group, requests for a special exception approval. Purpose for a proposed adult daycare, location 1443 East 84th Avenue, zoning C-3, highway commercial, case number Z6E20313. This is for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. The business license must be obtained prior to opening, including the inspection and approval from the town of Maryville's fire inspector. We have a, a letter here that inspections were made. Your building's going to have to be required to have a sprinkling system in and a manual fire alarm system per the Indiana Fire Code.
Madam President, they have to go through downstate for variance, and if, can we defer this till the September 24th meeting? Because if we deny it, they won't be able to bring it back up.
Bring it back, sure. Sure, we could table this for September 24th.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Whiting seconded by Councilman Garalchek to table this until September 24th, until all your paperwork and everything else is, is in.
Okay, we had some questions though regarding the, you talked about
Yeah, regarding the occupancy of the business over there. I spoke with the town of Maryville Chief Fire Inspector, and with that said, the previous owner was classified under medical, and they were classified as an institution. So there wasn't any fire sprinkler systems installed there.
They were grandfathered in.
So, right, so, I mean, would we fall under that category of them grandfathered in under
How long's the building in Vegas?
This is a new business.
A new business, but it's been longer than six months. John, what's the grandfather status on uses drop?
Councilman, I'm just not sure.
It's, it is six months.
Is it six months or a year?
Six months.
Six months.
Yeah, 180 days.
Okay.
If it's longer than that, then it would drop off.
Denise Sasebeto, the building's been, wasn't vacant that long. We've been doing this process for almost, it's getting close to, I think, nine months to a year now. So when we started this process, it hadn't been vacant that long. It's just that this process is taking so long that everything keeps moving out and out and out, and now we're benched again for another month, which I understand we have to get everything together, but I just want to make it clear that when we started this process, it had only been vacant for a very short time, you know, but like I said, this has been going on for
Since March.
Yeah, since March. We've been trying to get this, you know, going through and every month, we keep getting pushed back, and they've got business licenses and stuff that have been, you know, applied for. We would just like to be able to, if, you know, if there's some way that, I mean, I understand there's a process, but there's some, if there's some way that we can kind of, if they can get their paperwork together and into you, instead of having to wait again another month, then coming before the board, and then maybe if there's something else, it just keeps going on and on. And they're trying to
Excuse me?
Denise, they could deny this tonight, and then they can't be reheard for another year.
Okay.
So what we're trying to do is let you get your state approvals first before you come back to us. What we're doing is probably granting you
Okay, a little bit.
A little bit of time for you to get your state approvals. I mean, like she said, we can deny this tonight, and this will be over and done with for a year or so. I'm thinking we're trying to work with you.
Right, oh yeah, no, we realize that, it's just
Dorinda, is this the Grant Park Surgery Building?
Yes. No, it's next to it. Oh, it's, yes.
Between Grant Park and the old Social Security Building?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have one more question before you ladies leave. What is the number of clients or patients you're going to be having? Have you figured that out, or what is it, what is the maximum? Maybe that's what I need to ask. What is the maximum allowance of your patients?
Well, we're with the maximum, well, it's eight care, it's eight client to one caregiver. So we're looking into, starting about from 16 to 24 clients.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we vote on that?
The motion to table is still pending. It does need to be voted on.
That's right. And the motion again was by Councilman Whiting and also seconded by Councilman Garalchek. All in favor for tabling for September 24th meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to old business, do we have any old business? Any old business? How about new business? We have any new business? Do we have any public comments? We have any public comments? Please come up to the mic. State your name and address. Hi, Lori.
I'm Lori Verkoppich, 5625 Washington. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to see that Steffick Park was renovated. It was long overdue, and I'm congratulating Councilman Pettit on his new park. Your, your subdivision really needs it because there's a lot of children that, I've been campaigning through there for a few years, and there's a lot of children, and they could use the park. And I wanted to congratulate you, Carol Miano, Councilwoman, on preparing such a nice meal after the park dedication.
Oh, thank you.
It was really heartwarming for the council that weren't able to attend the luncheon. How many union members were there? It was very nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for going above and beyond your council duties. I don't even have a speech, but that's what I wanted to tell you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Lori, thank you. Anyone else on the public comment? Yes, sir. Hi.
My name is Timothy Maholic. I'm a Maryville resident. I live at 7252 Pierce Street.
Yes.
Carol shaking her head. I've got a question, but I'm going to, we'll save the question for last, okay? I would like to address the abandoned or foreclosed properties that are around our area. I've done a lot of internet search, and I'm only going to talk about three, and I'll try and be as short as possible. We'll start with kitty corner from my house. I live next door to Officer Barry Clanton, across the street from Jim Lilly, and kitty corner from us at 7257 Pierce Court is a vacant house that has been vacant for probably eight years. Now, I've lived on that corner for 43 years, so, you know, I know the property around there. Gutters are falling off, windows and doors are boarded up, moss and mold is now growing on the sides of the house, and only because of Carol, recently, they are starting to mow the lawn on a regular basis. But when there are tree limbs and stuff blow on the yard, the lawn company doesn't take that stuff away. They go around to the back of the house, because it's a bylaw, and they dump it in the big well by the sliding doors. I took one of these stickers off the door the other day, there's like five of them on there. It says, "Important, we found this property, be vacant, abandoned. The information will be reported to the mortgage holder. The mortgage holder has the right and duty to protect this property. The property may be rekeyed," and I don't quite understand what that means, "and winterized within three days." So that tells you how long this has been up there. And then they give you a phone number, it's some code enforcement and building official department. That's one of them. The second one, lot 400, 420, and 430, located on the northwest corner of 73rd and Madison. That's the Carriage House, the Railroad Hobby Building, and the house just west of the Carriage House.
Tape went off.
We got to change the tape around.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, so it includes those three buildings. I did a search on the internet, and I found, and you're talking about businesses and stuff, so maybe somebody here is familiar with it, a company called LoopNet. It was a commercial estate marketplace, and it's online, and it was listed as a reference for the Carriage House. It had a toll-free number, so I called. Its primary business is to provide commercial real estate listings for sale or lease. A private person like myself could call, or a real estate agent, and pay money to join their company, and they would let us know information. So, you know, I stretched the truth a little bit and told them that, you know, I was interested in this property. They gave me the name of a Lori Pubs. She works in Chicago but lives here in Maryville. She evidently is a real estate agent. I called her, and again, stretched the truth. Told her I was a resident, which is truthful, but that I was interested in possibly buying the property. Now, I have a copy of that, and they're, they're asking $100,000 for the entire three lots. And I, and she said, "Oh, you really want to buy that?" She goes, "I've had that listed for several years." She says, "You know, anybody that buys it is going to have to tear that down because those buildings are rotten and so forth and so on." I said, "But what if I wanted to offer a little bit less?" And she said, "Well, I could contact the owners." So that tells me somebody owns that property. Now, maybe one of you council members may know, may know that already, but as just a regular homeowner, I
I think I do, Joe, don't we?
Okay, so anyway, I'm looking at why that can't get cleaned up. And the last, the last property is a property where I used to go after football games, have a beer pizza with my kids, not that they drink beer, but the old mill. I know, I heard Carol talk about the historical thing and I know it's a historical site and that's fine, but in the meantime, can't any of these properties that if they're not owned by the town be told to get this stuff cleaned up? Can you imagine other people driving through our Maryville and seeing stuff like this and then coming here tonight? I noticed another one for the first time, real quick. If you're going down Seventy-third, go past the fire station, go past the trustees. Two houses down, that one's all boarded up sitting there now. It's a tall...
Yes, Mr. Manis's house.
Passed away.
And it's in an estate.
My final question, which...
I thought that one was sold already.
Can't we hold the banks, and I know you told me about the bank and the lot, can't we hold the banks responsible or the other people? Our code enforcement officers can come around and tell me to mow my lawn and do stuff or find, can't we do that to the people that own these properties? That's, that's just my question. Myself, Barry Clanton, and Lilly, we look at this stuff, the Sunday morning, we're getting ready for church and I saw Lilly getting ready to get in his car and he stopped and he walked over across the street and walked around the sides of the house. Cause the gutters are down, the soffits are hanging and you can see where the squirrels and stuff can just get inside the house. So that's it.
Tim, do you remember, do you remember the orange house on Seventy-third Avenue?
The what?
The orange house? That house was painted orange because of me, because when I was in Dorinda's position, we cited that guy who lived in Hobart, was an abandoned property owner, and instead of cleaning the property up, he got mad at the town and decided to paint the house orange.
Really?
And subsequently fell into such disrepair that we had to have it torn down. We tore, we tore down the red garage that was owned by Winita Byers through there. The garage in back of Mr. Manis's house, the one you were referring to, that had to be torn down. You know, I don't know what to do with the Old Mill. Carol and I have talked about that with the historic district going through there.
Yeah, I realize that the party don't wanna tear it down, but what are you gonna do it? You're gonna make everything else nice and who really owns the Old Mill anymore?
From what I understand, it's in, it's in a foreclosure.
Yeah, it's in bankruptcy court. Yeah, it's in bankruptcy court.
Hey, if you own it, if, if I have to take care of my yard, why can't the owners of those property, and by the way, I may have missed it, but LoopNet, they're located in San Francisco. I asked the lady, "Where are you at, Chicago?" Cause it's a one-eight-eight number. "Oh no, we're, we're located in San Francisco." And if you go on yet, I went on it tonight, there are thirty-three buildings on LoopNet in the town of Maryville that are listed. San Francisco?
You wouldn't believe, but there's probably eight hundred foreclosures in the town of Maryville.
Oh yeah, yeah, and I'm just talking about my area here. So that was my final question, you know, I don't know if we can do anything right away, but can't we hold them responsible?
We have another tragic story, Tim, that Chief Petrush and I, and, and we went out on, the largest house, probably the most expensive assessed house in the town of Maryville is in total disarray. Dr. Brazavon's old mansion on Ninety-seventh Avenue. Joe and his wife and I went out there and it is absolutely deplorable what has happened out there. Three feet of grass on twenty acres, built-in swimming pool with what Chief Petrush described, this cabbage growing in the bottom of the pool. The liner's falling off, doors broken, boarded up windows, they gutted the entire house. Finally, our code officer, Vicky Benell, went out there, got a service and she's gonna get a lot of things cut. Dorinda worked with her.
Yes.
And, but it, it doesn't matter whether it's a smaller, you know, moderate-sized home or a mansion like that out on twenty acres out in the Panhandle. These people will just up and leave and, and leave the mortgage company and they're out of state to, as you said, they don't, you know...
Like I said, if it wasn't for her calling, it took about a week and a half and they've been there now on a regular basis. But the house is still just falling apart and for people to drive by and wanna look to buy stuff, you know...
And you let them go for so long that they'll just, they'll have to be torn down. I mean, we've had to tear down one out in West Mill that was a beautiful ranch. Same situation where water got in the basement and the walls collapsed and there was nothing else to do with the black, with the mold and the, you know, the standing water, it had to be removed. And we're gonna, you know, hopefully we don't have that more often, but that's the drastic step.
All right, just let you know that there's people looking at those places.
Let me tell you right now, we are more frustrated than you are because you just see this, these guys hear this every day.
Oh, I'm sure.
They, they get calls every day.
I got the vice president of homeowners association, been waiting three and a half years for a burnout building in Broadfield Townhomes to be torn down.
Yeah, I've been talking about this for probably a year and my wife finally said, "Why don't you go to a council meeting, get on the internet." I said, "Well, I'm sure they know it." So let, let them know that a homeowner, you know...
You know, the most frustrating part is, the first week the house abandoned, you know, it's, it's livable, you can go in like this, but the bank will come in, they'll cut the power off, basement floods, from that point on, it's garbage. And they'll sit there for years and years and years. You would think you'd wanna do a quick turnaround as fast as you can, get the household down the road, you know, move and do something, but I don't understand it.
They write them off.
Yeah. It just, it just kills us. You know, and every one of these councilmen, I guarantee they get at least one phone call a day, if not more than that, on abandoned property.
And three of those, we'd like to keep in that historic district.
I know that, when I came, my wife said, you know, you're talking about, they've been talking about historic...
I'm being beat up on the Old Mill.
Time. I mean, when we first got married and moved out here, we bought stuff at the carriage house. Like I say, after the Andrain and Maryville football games, it was always best beats in town. But it's a shame to drive by there and, and see that, so, okay.
It's gonna change, it's, it's gonna get better.
Get the committee up and running, maybe we can do some things, cause we'd love to keep those.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah. My auntie from New York, when I was a kid, she brought some from the carriage house for me. It was my first Indian jewelry, so, something I treasure.
We had so much wrought iron in the house. Every time my wife went there, it was buying wrought iron. And with seven kids, she put one that had a bell on the side to ring it so when the kids are upstairs in the bedroom, they can come down. And we gave that to one of my other kids, so yeah. Well, listen, thank you for listening and I knew you were aware of it, but I just wanted to let you know, a, a regular homeowner wanted to complain.
Can we take his number for that committee for the historic district? You'd like to consider it?
Yes, apply.
I've got my name and phone number here if somebody wants to keep a copy of this. For whatever it's worth, here's that little thing there that's on the door and it's evidently better for a few winters.
And I guess it, it begs the question, Madam President, to Mr. Buscemi, and I know we, we went through this with past town attorneys and I, I was involved in it and now Dorinda and, and Vicky are involved in it with Mr. Geekus. You know, we have the unsafe blighted building hearing, the third Friday of every month, and some of those properties that we all see and each one of us has got two, three, four of those on there, and I'm sure Vicky could add more, but, you know, is it a matter, John, of Rick's hands being tied as the hearing officer? You know, we can't get into private property, but yet we got taxpayers that take care of their property that we've gotta still answer to and figure out a solution. And I don't know what the state law on, you know, this issue is, John, what we can do if we've made an attempt, if the bank is non-responsive after X number of days or the mortgage company, you know, what can the town do, you know, to take care of the residents' complaints? It's, it's a vicious cycle.
There's gotta be some kind of health, something we can do there with, some kind of a health thing, because first of all, lizard breed.
Yeah.
Dorinda? Yes. I make just a simple suggestion. I wonder if the council wouldn't consider possibly registering these vacant homes? Not to bring in revenue however, but to get that information from the property owners, not only the property owners, the banks or whatever, so we could track them and move quickly on situations like this. There are other communities that do have vacant or abandoned registration requirements, so if we would consider doing something like that, that may help a little bit.
Well, the successor, doesn't the successor have...
Thank you.
...that tells you who owns that property?
Right, but sometimes to track down the banks are the difficult part. They'll tell you who owns it, it's in bankruptcy or foreclosure, and then we're kind of like at a standstill. Right. However, if they have to provide us with information on, you know, the bank that they've mortgaged through, whether, and then we could contact the bank, then they could help us work through the process more quickly or to maintain the property, we could get after them, we could find them directly, then, then maybe that would be more advantageous for our community.
That might be, I, I mean, let's, you're responsible for the property, if you're putting a sticker on the door like Tim brought up or, or something, or we know that the mortgage company is involved in that, find the mortgage company. Have Geekus, have Rick, find the mortgage company until, you know...
Yeah.
Maybe they have too many to maintain, then they still won't care. It's something.
If they're paying a fine, they're gonna, they're gonna move something on it. If it's just sitting there, you know, I mean...